Hi, this is Carrie Clark. Hello. I'm starting the meeting. It's May 13th, 2025.
Crystal.
Meeting. I'm sorry. I'm trying to go seriously, but everyone's laughing at me, so I apologize. So my name is Carrie Clark. I am not Maggie Larson. She's on her way. Oh, Crystal's here. That's great. Can we get a roll call? Perfect.
Maggie Larson, Carrie Clark.
Here.
Sarah O'Brien-Hart.
Here.
Crystal D. St. Croix.
Here.
Marsha Brown.
Bridgette Jameson.
Here.
Carly Prescott.
Marsha's excused. All right. So we have to all rise for the national anthem? The Pledge of Dilegence. All right. Do we have any comments by visitors? Seeing nuns, reading comments by board members? Okay, seeing none. What's the wish of the board with the consent calendar?
I need to remove something from the consent calendar, so I have not done my due diligence, so we do not have the special ed ad hoc minutes, but I will have them for the next board meeting.
Okay. So do we have to motion to suspend rules to remove that, or can we just move that here?
Thank you. We can just remove it.
So did-
Motion to remove the special ed ad hoc minutes.
Second. Perfect. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Perfect.
Add to that you do have the April 8th. No, that's special education ad hoc. Where is it listed as? Is it on the consent calendar, Sarah?
I am, yeah, I almost wonder if that was actually supposed to be this.
I think they got it reversed.
Yep. So motion to add the April 8th ed committees meeting minutes, thank you, to the consent calendar.
Everybody has. You got that?
Okay.
I think we have to vote on that motion.
Okay, let's vote. Who wants to say what?
Say all in favor.
All in favor. It's gonna be rough, you guys. All in favor?
Aye.
Perfect. Okay. All right, so going into our student rep. I don't see a student rep today. And then they'll be here at the next meeting. Perfect. And then superintendent's report?
Thank you, Vice Chair Clark. Number one, teacher staff appreciation was last week. I just want a special thank you to the parents and so many other folks. Students have participated in bringing stuff out every day. The district did some things as well, and it was just a really special week. And it included a teacher workshop, unplanned teacher workshop day because of the special election for the New Hampshire House. And one of the highlights of that, I think, was having four of our own perform a Bob Dylan song at the end of an opening district-wide gathering that got a standing ovation from the entire district staff. Well, 275 of us is really nice. But we really do appreciate everything that everybody does to recognize our teachers and our staff, and especially recognize all of our teachers and our staff. It was a special week. Couple of things on the calendar, just since we don't have a student report. This board meeting, we will, next board meeting. Prom is this weekend, and just a reminder for folks that are watching or hear that messaging to kids about never getting behind the wheel of an automobile when you shouldn't be behind the wheel of an automobile is a good one. In my high school principal days, I like to articulate it as pretty much one of the most selfish and arrogant things you can do as a human being to put other people's lives in risk. So watch out for each other. I know we've got some folks that are here right now. Please watch out for each other and be bold and courageous, and when you see somebody that shouldn't be getting behind the wheel of the car, be the one that steps in and make sure that they don't. June 6th is graduation, and we'll hear about that at our next meeting as well. It's a Friday night, 6:00 PM, UNH Whittamore Center. Everybody is encouraged and welcome to be there. It's one of the great things about Whittamore Center is there are no restrictions on how many folks can turn out to recognize our students, and they're not graduating from the high school, they're graduating from the district. So we like to remind everybody that they've, many of them have been here since Idlehurst in their early elementary days. June 16th, Monday, June 16th, is still the last day of school. A reminder that the district-wide showcase is at the Idlehurst Elementary School this Thursday at 6:00 PM. Did I get that right, Devin? This Thursday at 6:00 PM. All are invited. It's particularly a nice opportunity for parents from all the schools to come out and see what their students have been up to. Number three, just, we've got principals, I think, that are gonna be reaching out to the parents, particularly high school, middle school, or maybe already have. There's a thing going around on TikTok called the Chromebook Challenge, and I won't go into details, but it's just kind of suggesting that it's fun to do certain things to a Chromebook that can take it out of commission and/or get them on fire. So just a reminder, we hope our families, middle school, high school, Maplewood in particular, are paying attention to this, talking to your kids, and reminding them that the resources in our schools, our buildings, our facilities, our resources are ours, and they're paid for collectively by us. And just to be mindful of these things, you know, there's so much out there that our kids are saying that it's important to have these conversations and be paying attention to. Fourth, almost last, we are officially in the ACLU lawsuit against US Department of Education that was just accepted by District Court a couple of days ago. So we were kind of pending until then. And again, this challenge will cost nothing of the district nor be a distraction from our important work that teachers and staff are doing. We join the Oyster River Cooperative School District, the Dover District, and the Hanover District, the four of us in New Hampshire, in participating in this lawsuit. And lastly, I'll just note, she received a really wonderful, warm round of applause, even not being president, even not being present last Tuesday. But Summersworth Police Officer Megan Tully will be our new school resource officer going into next year. She's been working with Ashley Fuller, our former school resource officer, on an interim basis, and Ashley continues to be our SRO till the end of this year, filling in for Officer South having moved on to Portsmouth. Thank you.
All right, moving on to the business administrator's report. Nothing for today. Perfect. And then city council is not here. So we're moving on to our committee report. So standing committees. Anything from Budget and Revenue Committee? We have not met. Thank you. And then Building and Grounds and Transportation, we've not met. Okay. And then Education and Community, Education Programs, Community Outreach?
Yeah, we met on the 7th, and basically the purpose of the meeting was to discuss the MOU between New Hunger, ugh, man, tonight, right? New Hampshire Hunger Solutions in collaboration with In 68 Hours of Hunger, Food Pantry, and the district. So just in summary, we're making a recommendation from the committee to send the MOU to the full board. It's under New Business tonight for approval of funds for pantry startup costs.
Yes, yep. Go ahead, Crystal.
Sorry. So real quick, the Buildings, Grounds, and Transportation and Security meeting is tomorrow. We are meeting at 5:00 at the SAU building. It is not listed below, and so I needed to double-check before I made that announcement, but it is scheduled for tomorrow at 5:00.
All right, thank you for that. We'll add that to the bottom, for sure. And then Personnel Negotiations meeting. We just had a quick meeting right before this meeting to discuss moving forward with our collective bargaining agreement between the SASSPA and Summersworth School Board, so that's gonna come before the full board tonight, for sure. And then moving on to AIs on 30. We've not heard anything from them in a while. And the Policy Committee meeting. Kat?
Yep, so we met on May 6th to continue reviewing and updating policies. We reviewed and updated five that will become before the board for first read tonight, and I'll go into more detail about the edits and revisions to those policies when we get there.
Thank you. And then Special Ed, Education Ad Hoc Committee?
No updates.
No updates. Thank you. Moving on to our Career Tech Center presentation. Thank you.
Good evening. Thank you for inviting us to come and share all the opportunities the Career Technical Center has to offer to not only our students, but also the rest of the tri-city region, which include Dover, Rochester, Oyster River, and Tri-City Christian Academy. My name is Crystal Perez, and I am a senior at Summersworth High School. I have had the privilege of being a part of the two-year IBEAM program, which stands for Innovations in Business, Entrepreneurship, and Marketing. Through this program, I have gained invaluable skills that have not only prepared me for the next steps in my education, but has also opened doors to the real-world business opportunities. The IBEAM program is a unique and forward-thinking approach to high school education. It has also allowed me and many of my peers to dive deep into the fields of business, entrepreneurship, and marketing, equipping us with the knowledge and practical experience that will serve us in our future careers. We've learned everything from the understanding financial statements to creating marketing campaigns and even managing real-world projects through our schools' entrepreneurial initiatives. In the fall, I will be attending the Paul College of Business and Economics at the University of New Hampshire. I'm excited to continue my studies in business, and I truly believe that IBEAM program has provided me with a strong foundation to succeed in this chapter. Without the opportunities and mentorship provided by IBEAM, I wouldn't have the same level of confidence or clarity about my career path.
And I'm Natalia Fosino, attending Summersworth High School as a current sophomore. I'm currently in my first year of IBEAM, and my goal going into next year is to pursue IBEAM 2 as a junior. My career goal is to end up working as a corporate lawyer, and IBEAM helps me to not better, to end up better understanding how business operates. I've been beyond appreciative for my IBEAM class. It consistently informs me on marketing and the fundamentals of our economy and sales. I feel that I'm not only retaining new information, but learning where my interests stand in business and where concepts I would not want to steer towards. As the end of the school year is around the corner, I'm beyond excited to start my second year of IBEAM next fall. I'm a strong believer that the CTE program comes with many benefits. These programs are not only engaging, but hands-on, which is what I love most about it. IBEAM helps to prepare me for real-life business operations in the sales aspects, making me feel confident as I look towards college and future opportunities. I'm beyond grateful to say that after only a year of being part of a CTE program, I feel confident when talking about business and marketing, and I cannot wait to build more of my knowledge in the years to come.
Hi, I'm Desi Brown. I am the IBEAM teacher. I have been teaching in the district. This is my 17th full year. I promise I did not pay them to say those amazing things. But yeah, I'm excited to be up here and share all of the programs with you. But first, they are gonna go through kind of the Career Tech Center just in general, and then I'm gonna do a quick overview of the programs.
Sure. So the CTE is a two-year program that you can take starting your sophomore year. It's to help you understand the career you're trying to go into. We offer many types of programs. We have medical assisting. We have automotive. We have woodworking and business. We also have culinary. So we have a lot of different programs to help you learn the skills or understand the skills you need in order to go into the job you're interested in. Many of our students are CTE participants. 62% of 10th and 12th graders are enrolled in these CTE programs, and 50% of our graduates are CTE completers, and 50% of our top 10s are, have participated in these CTE programs. These programs really help us learn about the industry that we're going to, and it really stimulates, like simulates a workplace environment. For example, in IBEAM, we run the Topper Shop, which is our school store. So we are selling cookies, popcorn, whoopee pies, and pizza. And each month, we have promotions to either increase sales, to increase people coming into the store. I know Culinary has their own restaurant, which they run. So all these CTE programs have their own thing, like simulating a real-life, like, job. So I know for, what's it called, medical assisting, once they complete their entire two years, they get a certificate, which can help them get a real job in the real world. So that's really cool. These are highlights for the year. And that's you.
Okay, so these are the highlights for the CTE programs throughout the year. So Building Trades had a holiday gift project. They created gifts for their friends and families between Thanksgiving and Christmas break, and they give it to their families for presents. CTE Day for 9th graders was during upperclassmen SAT and PSATs, where they got to explore CTE programs and hands-on activities. And it was just a way for them to engage and explore the different career paths they could follow. Auto mock interviews, so all students prepared resumes and interview skills. Some were offered jobs, actually, and six auto PAC members attended. Amazing Race CTE Style goal was to build teamwork within programs and foster connections across the center. A little friendly competition kept the energy high as we headed off to our holiday vacation in December. Broadcast Challenge was news headline relay, so students take turns reading a fun scripted headline from a teleprompt or a cue card, practicing clear and confident delivery, no giggling. Theater Tech challenged Prop Scavenger Hunt. Teams must arrange props and set pieces according to a provided stage layout diagram. Accuracy and speed are critical. So New Electives is go-kart, which is design and drive. So teachers were tasked with creating cross-program learning opportunities. This is a nine-week go-kart project, and 54 students, three go-karts, one epic end-of-a-class competition. IBEAM, we went to Stonewall Kitchen, and we placed fourth place in national marketing campaign. And we actually helped them set up their, what was it, Christmas?
Yeah.
Their Christmas displays. Chamber of Commerce, so we have an event happening Wednesday, May 21st, at 10:00 AM to 12:30. We're addressing business casual, and it's in Mulligan's Grill, inviting Chamber of Commerce and local businesses to learn more about our CTC program and network with students. So the students get to engage with these members from local businesses. Is this for you?
Yeah, perfect. That's for me. Yeah, so the go-kart, the new go-kart course is between three programs. They're working together. So it'll be pre-engineering, Building Trades, and Auto. And the students will go through a little bit with each of the courses, the different programs for that. So that's exciting. And then our event next week with the Chamber, again, it's made to introduce networking to our students. So we have been practicing handshakes there, creating business cards, LinkedIn accounts, and then they're gonna kind of learn the art of networking with Chamber members next week and local industry professionals that are gonna come in to learn about our programs. And this is what they're going to see. This is all student-created. I'm just gonna kind of highlight it, but the business students, they have been working with the individual program teachers and kind of building a slide for each of them that they're gonna present next week at the event. So Culinary Arts, obviously, they have a lot of delicious things happening in their program. But more importantly, they have an amazing kitchen, if any of you guys have actually been through it, to see the, just the great technology that has been infused into their program. And then we also have Mulligan's Grill that they open occasionally, depending on what aligns with their curriculum. But they have a couple of exploratory classes. They have post-secondary partners. Really important are their certifications, their industry-recognized certifications that they earn through that program. Then there's Theater, Tech, and Design. Again, two-year program. They gain building technology teamwork, artistic and music experience. And the main goal is for students to gain experience that they would experience in the real theater technical world. So they work with, for instance, the drama program. They do all of the theater tech design portion of that. When they did Mean Girls last year, Little Shop of Horrors, the Theater Tech Design Program does all of the backgrounds. They do all of the staging, the lighting. So they work really closely with the drama club for that. Broadcasting, I'm sure you've seen Mr. Rogers around. They still put out a, they put out their SWN episode pretty much every week. And students are, we, as teachers or instructors, advisory teachers, we show that in advisory on Mondays or Fridays. And they are preparing students for successful careers in the entertainment industry, but also in broadcasting communications in general. So students looking to understand being in front of a camera, and obviously YouTube, social media influencers, they are in that world, and they have to learn how to be on camera and use that technology. Medical assisting and phlebotomy. Last week, they took their big MA certification, and 100% of the students passed that certification, which is industry-recognized. MAs would have to take that certification if they chose not to take MA in high school, but were to take it through a technical college. It's the same program. So really impressive. Pre-engineering, Mr. Olson is back and stepped in for Julie Lemke while she's out on maternity. But again, really great program for career opportunities, lots of experience. They use Project Lead the Way, which is also industry-recognized. And they can move on to their post-secondary education with a lot of great skills and that critical and analytical thinking. IBEAM, this is my program. We do the Topper Shop, the school store. We also do our entrepreneurial piece is we do Hilltopper Tees. So we do custom apparel. So the students can design artwork, and then we are able to put the artwork on the apparel. So we do our school store outfit. As far as Hilltopper apparel is concerned, students and the community can purchase it. But we do outside orders as well. So we can work, we work with businesses, organizations, and we kind of have a custom order going all of the time, along with the Topper Shop and our curriculum. Building Trades, they, again, they're a two-year program. Also, Year One, they focus on foundational skills and safety, and then Year Two builds on skills from Year One. They, their shop is really amazing also. It literally has everything you can imagine that someone in Building Trades would need to learn how to use. And they're learning about blueprint reading, construction, carpentry basics. And they have all of those transferable employability skills also. And then they have the amazing Large Equipment Simulator. Animation and Web Design, so a really big piece of technology that's out there. We know that AI is changing things, but the really fine details of web development, design work, and game development has to be done still by a human. There's a lot that AI can do, and it creates the framework. But the kind of what people respond to still has to be done by web designers and animation designers. Automotive, they have their big certification ASE, which is Safety Training through SP2. They do a lot of soft skills, teachability, teamwork, critical thinking, integrity, hard skills, regular maintenance, brake jobs, alignment, and tires. And their shop is state-of-the-art also. And that really kind of concludes our presentation, an overview of all nine of our programs and what CTE does in general for our district. And I think just in general, I'm sure it's been said many times, the privilege of having a Career Tech Center attached to a high school is really, again, I always go back to Summersworth as just a small, like, a little gem, a little hidden gem. And a lot, it's so great that a lot of our students take advantage of the Career Tech Center right on campus. So thank you for letting us deliver this information to you, and hope you have a great rest of your meeting.
Before we, before you go, does anybody wanna say anything? Anyone have any questions for them? I just wanna say, I love when the CTC comes. I think it's so amazing to hear all the amazing things that students are doing in the CTC and how they can progress in the real world going forward. So thank you. I'm so excited to hear about all of your future endeavors. So that's great. And it looks like Maggie Larson is back, so that's great. Phew, okay.
Thank you.
Did anyone else have anything to say?
I was just gonna say it was great. It was so, my first time hearing it, and I loved it. And Carrie, you did a great job, like, doing amazing.
Hi, everyone. Summersworth is doing amazing at their track meet in Portsmouth. Pretty incredible to see so many students just PR and get on the leaderboard, and that's where I just came from. So we're, we're on policies. Thank you. All right. So our policy adoption. Yes. Do I have a second? All in favor?
Aye.
And Board Member Jameson, are you kind of, or Kat Crosby? Yep, perfect.
I'm gonna yell to Kat Crosby.
Is it me? Are you all staying? You wanna come sit up here? Okay.
Okay, as I shared in the update from the committee meeting, the committee met on May 6th, and we have five policies for first read and also a district interview form as well. So the first one, by title only, DGD, School District Credit- So the first one, by title only, DGD, School District Credit and Procurement Cards. And for that one, we had a couple changes. It's pretty simple this one, just had a title change that had to be done, as well as added related policies that weren't listed on there. So we wanted to make sure that those were on there. You want to read all of them at one time?
Each one, each, each, each one. It's a first reading, so we're not adopting them. So we can just kind of, just by title only and you can go through the list.
Great. The second is DID, Inventory and Management of Assets. And that one was a title change. And also we're working to get all of the policies in NHSBA format. So we made sure to do that with that policy as well and added a related policy to that. Policy EBCA, Crisis Prevention and Emergency Response Plans. That one had some changes due to a date change that occurred that needed to be updated in the policy, as well as just some language changes that needed to be taken care of. Policy ECH, Chemical Safety and Chemical Hygiene Plan and ECH-E1 Chemical Hygiene Plan. The policy was a brand-new policy this year, so we had to add that. It's a required-by-law policy. The chemical plan, we already had in districts, so we just added that in as the form for our chemical plan. And then the exit interview form, the exit interview survey already exists, but the committee felt it would be a good idea to have a hard copy that lives somewhere so that it could be referenced as to what the exit interview survey contains. So we created it as a hard copy form to have. And the survey will be hyperlinked in the actual policy.
Wonderful. Thank you so, that, thank you so much. Do we have a, we have a policy meeting?
May 21st.
May 21st, and that would be, that would be it for the school year?
Yes, 3:00 PM at the SAU.
Thank you. Thanks so much. All right, those are for first readings. Those will be for second reading at our May 27th meeting. We'll have probably an allotment of another first reads as well at our next meeting. All right, our new business, 8.1, the path between Bartlett Ave, Maplewood and Summersworth Middle School and High School and Proposed Public Access Restrictions. Board Member DeSt Croix or Superintendent?
We, we have a recommendation from the committee that we do want to post signage on the Maplewood path. So that would be over on Bartlett Ave or Bartlett Street where it first comes in and all the way back to basically the back parking lot of the middle school and high school. And I think the, the motion would be to authorize me to contact the city and request that we work together to put those signs up. We'd already spoken to the city manager about it, but we would want to do it collaboratively. But it would be only restricted, restricted to public during school hours and school days. So we'll need a sign that kind of makes that clear as to what those hours are and what those times are.
Okay, so kick it to the city for signage and understanding. Any questions? Any? All right. So looking for a recommendation to authorize the superintendent to work with the city for posting signage and communication with the city. Something like that.
I motion to allow Superintendent to speak to the City Council, yeah.
For the Maplewood signage.
For Maplewood signage, yeah. I think we are, perfect.
Second? A second, a second. Okay, any discussion? No? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, thank you. I think that will be helpful. Has it been an issue?
It had not been.
Okay, sorry.
It had not been an issue for a while, but then there was an incident where Maplewood staff and faculty have just generally been pretty good about if they see folks that are in there, because basically you have kids in the public within feet of each other, literally, as it passes so close to the playground and to the school. And it all got started up again when someone politely requested that folks that were on the path, that it wasn't accessible. It was a misunderstanding, because I believe we thought there was postage at Bartlett Ave. There is a sign that you see the back of from the school, but it's about motor vehicle access, not about public access restricted. We talked with the city about it and they said, we're probably in a place where we could consider posting it, even though it's, it should be public because of the federal dollars involved, but as balancing that against the safety risks, so we'll, we'll work something out.
Got it. Okay, great, thank you. All right, 8.2, our federal fiscal year 26, General Assurances Signature Required by June 1st, so.
So this is just informational for now, and we'll need to make a decision at our next school board meeting ahead of the June 1st deadline as to exactly what we'd like to do to proceed with this. So I'm just going to give you the background on it now. And there were three documents included in your school board materials that I'll reference, give you an opportunity to look over before the next meeting. But if we want to have some discussion now or ask any questions, we're going to get guidance from the ACLU before our next school board meeting. My understanding is the New Hampshire School Board Association is also issuing guidance on, on her before May 19th, which will be ahead of our next school board meeting. And by way of reminder, my recommendation on the April certifications, as well as this, is that we never want to do anything to jeopardize federal funding, but we also want to stand firm where things are being put in front of us that we do not agree with. So we'll find that balance there and we'll have appropriate guidance on it. I'm not clear if the injunction that was granted, we're not clear if the injunction that was granted for the April certifications would also apply to these January 1 assurances. So just quick background, what you have in your packet, the, that is April 4th, 2025, dated to senior educational officials. It's 16 or 17 pages long. It's about, it's after the policies in your packet. This is a relatively standard, every-year document that the school board chair and the superintendent need to sign in order to be eligible for receiving federal dollars in the coming school year. And it's generally a non-event most years. You go through it and it's about, you know, nondiscrimination, accounting procedures and everything that we will do in advance of receiving federal dollars and everything that we commit to. This year, on what is page, it's the fourth page of that document. It's titled, General Assurances, Requirements and Definitions for Participation in Federal Programs at the top. I just, the two things I want to draw your attention to that are under A, General Assurances, Paragraph 6, A and B underneath Paragraph 6, I'll just read these two to you. The only things I'll read, there's a lot here, but A says the Title 1 of the Civil Rights Act of 1964, which prohibits discrimination on the basis of race, color or national origin, including any guidance issued consistent with executive order. This is the part that was added. Executive Order 14151, ending radical and wasteful government DEI programs and preferencing from the White House in January 20th, 2025. That part about Executive Order 14151 was added. And under Part B, Language Around Executive Order 14168, defending women from gender ideology extremism and restoring biological truth to the federal government, is the language that was added. I believe the rest of the document looks as it has in the past. Those are the two things that have been added. And you also have in your packet both of those executive orders. They're three, four, five pages long. Executive Order 14151 is the one about ending radical and wasteful government DEI programs and preferencing. This executive order looks very similar to the February 14th Dear Colleagues Letter that is the one we are fighting the U.S. Department of Education on through the lawsuit that we have now joined. And you can look over that yourself, but it basically is the same language suggesting that diversity, equity, inclusion, accessibility programs fly in the face of the Civil Rights Act and are discriminatory. And you also have Executive Order 14168. Both of these came out from the President on January 20th of this year, and that's the defending women from gender ideology extremism and restoring biological truth to the federal government piece. And I'll just read to you the purpose, Section 1, Purpose. Across the country, ideologues who deny the biological reality of sex have increasingly used legal and other socially coercive means to permit men to self-identify as women and gain access to intimate, single-sex spaces and activities designed for women, from women's domestic abuse shelters to women's workplace showers. This is wrong. So that just gives you a sense for how this executive order begins and the tone behind it. So before January, sorry, before June 1st, after our next school board meeting, we will need to decide to basically have the school board chair and superintendent sign as is, sign with an amendment or with an understanding that the injunction covers this, elect not to sign. And we can discuss that a little bit now, but we can also put that on the agenda for the next school board meeting, if that makes sense, with further guidance.
Do we have any guidance now about what that amendment would be? Because this is a bigger, this, the impact of the general assurances, what's the drawback of funding? Is there a funding attachment to not signing this?
It's basically the $2 million-ish dollars that we get from Titles 1, 2, 3 and 4 predominantly, $1 to $2 million. Some of that was one-time money that's kind of faded out that would be at stake. We don't have guidance at this point as to whether or not the injunction that was already granted by the New Hampshire Federal District Court would apply to this. So we'll get good guidance beforehand. I remain in the camp recommending to the school board that if we don't have clear guidance, that it's okay to stand our ground on it, then we sign, because we can't risk giving up money. But we can cross that bridge at the next board meeting.
I'd just like to clarify that that second executive order that cited about biological basis for gender, whatever that is, that's the one that multiple scientists have testified on before Congress that is factually and scientifically inaccurate. Is that everyone else's understanding?
Okay. I just wanted to clarify, because like, that's, I mean, I understand it's every single school district in the country, but like, what a ridiculous thing to ask of, of a, of a school. So I guess that's just my comment, but.
Yep, yep. So this will come before us at our next meeting. I'm expecting an amendment to sign, you know, something to sign, you know, that's a, I'm not even sure of the words, what to say. We, we need the fund, the funding, maybe it's very vague, it's very hard to understand. It's many, many pages and what they've added, I'm not even sure what that means. So the other part of it says that the school board chair has to sign like no other officials can. So I think what we're going to be looking for from the board is, you know, recommending to sign with a, you know, giving me the authority to sign on behalf of the school board and the superintendent, and then that's where we'll be in two weeks. Yeah.
I would encourage, the 16-page document is a lot, but you just have to go to that A, 6, A and B, if you review those. And I think review both executive orders, which are each, one's about three pages, one's four or five. So we'll go into that meeting with a clear understanding of the language, because nowadays everybody's reducing things to a sentence or two of this or a sentence or two of that, and it's important for us to have the meat of it, as well as the summary version. And we'll include it in the next board materials too, so you have it again.
This is, this is all public and online right now, as is the agenda materials. So the public can review it as well. All right, anyone else? Wait. All right, moving on to 8.3, the MOU with New Hampshire Hunger Solutions and N68 Hours of Hunger for Summersworth High School Food Pantry and Storage. I can start to speak about it, and then, you know, this is, this has kind of been a long time coming. There's a funding from the Hannaford Foundation and New Hampshire Hunger Solutions to establish in collaboration, 68, N68 Hours of Hunger, a food pantry, storage spot to pack the 160-plus bags that our students get every Friday for the 68 hours at the weekend, to have food for the weekend and, and food insecurity. And then to also have funding to promote food pantries, hangry huts, hilltopper huts, something like that at the high school and middle school where stigma is kind of a issue with, especially with food insecurity and access food. And this would not replace mealtime, breakfast or lunch, but it would be kind of a stepping stone to address food insecurity and hunger at our middle and high. But right now, it's just the, you know, for the board, since we're receiving money and that it's an MOU on the finance side, and Katie is the point person, so I can hand it over to you.
Just one more update. Myself and Jay and Liza Press from Fresh Picks met with Marcy on Monday to look at the space. And it's actually going to move from the original area in that storage room to in back of the snack shack at the high school. There's an area back there that's actually a key entry versus a badge entry. So they'll be allowed to use that versus the other room, which will be easier access for them. And she was, she was very thankful for the space and could make it work, so I think we're, we're good to go.
They already knew there was room back there. They're still hidden rooms.
Right now, it's just a storage area for Fresh Picks for the snack shack, but we're going to rework it and make it work for them, and it'll be a much easier space. They'll be able to access it during regular hours and up until about 10 o'clock. Then the alarm gets set and they won't be able to access it then, but she said, yeah, 10:00 PM.
PM, oh, okay.
It just has to be during hours where staff is there, otherwise the alarms are set and it would set the alarm off. And she said that wasn't a problem, so, yeah, so I think it's going to be a better space for them. Yep.
Okay, good. Yeah, yeah, of course.
And, you know, just to mention to the public or whoever, the, the really cool thing about, I mean, besides feeding hungry people, is that we know that feeding students and feeding families increases attendance and increases academic engagement and increases community participation in the school. So like, it's, it's an underpinning thing that we can do to improve everything about our goals for this district. So I'm just very excited about this opportunity.
Yeah, no, I really, really, it's really wonderful. I'm not sure if any other districts are kind of, they've been food pantries, but at the high school level, the free and reduced applications really drop off significantly. And, yep, go ahead.
So the other thing being is that hopefully with New Hampshire Hunger Solutions working with us and, you know, 68 Hours of Hunger, which also bring bags to my school, that we can increase engagement in SNAP and some of those forms, which goes towards our adequacy, yes? So like, that is, you know, hopefully council, we can communicate that to councilor, I'll talk to Crystal later, but, you know, just efforts to find funding for school, you know? So that's also an advantage of all of this.
Having three teenagers and knowing food just in general at that level, everyone's different, but goodness is there, hunger across the board on many levels. To de-stigmatize and kind of, the food insecurity and nourishment is very real in our, in our community and, I don't know what the percentage is of 160, I mean, it's a significant, we have about 45% free and reduced lunch at the elementary levels. And this is just one more of the stepping stone for pro-social, food is, getting together and around food is pro-social. So with that, the MOU needs to be approved by the board since it's a, over $2,500?
Yeah, they have to accept the funds because it's over the limit.
So I'm looking for a motion to accept the, it is new business, so I'll look for a motion to suspend rules to adopt the MOU, if that's the wish of the board, so we can move forward with this.
I motion to suspend rules.
Okay, so do I have a second?
Second.
Second, all right, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, great. And then the recommend, the motion would be to adopt the MOU as presented with New Hampshire Hunger Solutions and N68 Hours of Hunger for food pantry and storage.
And to accept the 16, the $6,000.
And to accept the $6,000 that, should I say $6,000 from, from the Hannaford Foundation or from?
It says, it says that New Hampshire Hunger Solutions is giving us the initial funding.
New Hampshire Hunger Solutions. We'll say New Hampshire Hunger Solutions. Yep. All right, so let's add that, $6,000 from New Hampshire Hunger Solutions. All right.
So motion, what was the, motion?
To accept the MOU.
Motion to accept the MOU and accept the $6,000 from New Hampshire Hunger Solutions to go towards the 68 Hours of Hunger, food pantries and storage at our district.
Second.
Perfect. Any discussion? Nope. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Pretty easy one. Thank you, everyone, for the work. So grateful. No old business. Future meeting dates, Educational Programs Outreach, May 13th at the SAU, 5:30. Our next regular school board meeting is May 27th and June 10th. I did reach out to our student school board members to see if they would at least offer up my seat to, for June 10th, to help run the meeting for June 10th. We'll see how heavy it is if something very serious comes up at this point, to be able to kind of be in these roles for a minute with us here. We've done that in the past and it's kind of a good opportunity for them to kind of be at the helm.
Today is May 13th, so the next Educational Programs and Outreach would be in June. The date, I don't recall, but.
Did you already have it today?
It's, we moved it from today because of the MOU.
Oh, of course, yeah.
So, Cor Bridgette. But it will be in June, is our, I think, last one for the school year.
Okay, great. Yep.
Just a reminder that on May 27th, we're going to be recognizing our retirees during the school board meeting.
Oh, good, okay. School board meeting, and we'll be here at 5:30 with the New Hampshire School Boards Association. I think we still need to post that. All right. Any comments by visitors this evening? Any comments by, come on, come up. Come on up. Come up. Come up to the microphone, Desi.
My name is John Usmani. I'm a junior at Summersworth High School. One question that I do have is, I didn't really understand what the executive orders meant. See if you can just put it in simple terms. If it's fine, if not, I don't really mind.
Shorter answer is, we have no idea what they mean. Second answer, because they're ambiguous and vague in terms of the precise nature of what they're looking at. The first executive order referred, referred to this evening that was in the federal assurances about diversity, equity, and inclusion essentially suggest that diversity, equity, and inclusion programs are in and of themselves discriminatory because they favor certain students over others. So if you break apart the pieces of that, what is it, you can't object to diversity. Diversity is an adjective that describes who we are, so that one's just a little bit troubling. Equity, the idea that everybody has fair and equal opportunities, that would include, for example, somebody who's learning English as a second or third language gets that support in order to study. Someone with special education, individualized education plan gets the support they need in order to be able to study and participate in programs, among other things. And also, oftentimes, we host clubs and organizations around similar interests because we have a lot of people that have a common background or a common interest. I think as a practice, we're pretty good about making sure that everybody knows that all are invited, even if there may be a population that's kind of at the center of it. And inclusion is fundamentally, again, it's about anybody in our school district or anybody in our community feels a part of it and welcome and engaged. So I struggle with how you can attack those ideas in an executive order and then tie federal funding to it personally, but I think the current federal administration objects to D E I programs that seem to be targeted a little more aggressively than they believe is appropriate. And I'm a big fan of the fact that as a school superintendent, as school administrators, there's Democrats, Republicans, Libertarians, Independents, Green Parties, Socialists, it doesn't matter what political party you're a part of. I think it's wrong to, for anybody to attempt to politicize these fundamental ideas, like integrity shouldn't be politicized. I don't think inclusiveness should be politicized. I don't think character or responsibility should be politicized. So there's a little bit on it. The second one is about gender, and it's particularly transgender, that is, the idea, the, let me just say, is upsetting to certain people within our current federal administration, and they want to do what they can to kind of take it out of the equation, and, you know. Is that a little bit helpful?
Yeah, that does.
I would encourage you, both of these are relatively short, so go see Mr. Sealy, yeah. And read them, and talk to folks in the, in school about, you know, what they're about, and have good conversation about them. There's three pages for the one executive order, four or five to the other.
I think you just got homework.
Yeah.
So, and then, kind of stemming off of that first executive order, personally, I am a part of the multicultural club, so that very obviously, it focuses on like, in my club, there's a lot of diversity, there's a lot of people who are from different races. Personally, I'm Indonesian, and I have another friend who's Indonesian, half-Chinese. I have, there's white people in there, there's, it's, it's just made up of a lot of different colors, so, and, so for that executive order to kind of sound like it's targeting diversity is, is my club kind of like in danger of that, or am I, is, like, it's not going to like get disbanded or nothing?
Not if we have anything to do about it.
Okay.
No. No, this isn't, we, I think we're, I think the superintendent's coming to a gov class or a history class. Are you in any government or world?
Ms. Beckwood's government class, that's why I'm here right now.
Okay, all right, oh, great.
We'd be happy to, I've spent a little time with Mr. Engelfinger and Mr. Sealy, and I'd be happy to do that with Ms. Beckwith as well. By definition, the multicultural club would probably be one of the hardest ones for the federal government to go after. If you had a club that was focused on Indonesian heritage and values, that might be one that the federal government felt they had an argument for, but you have a school board and a superintendent and a high school administration that sees the value in these things, so we will fight with you, and you guys should be, join in as you agree. And again, it's not about what political party any of you might belong to, or your parents, what party your parents might belong to. These are just simple core ideas that are central to public education.
Yeah.
And even if you were assigned to be here, I'm really glad you're here.
Thank you so much for having me.
I mean, yeah, just, just for clarity's sake, for, I can speak for myself and I guess to the sky of people, right, the public, right?
Yes.
That, you know, I just, to be clear on my position, I believe in diversity, I believe in inclusion, I believe in meeting people's needs, I believe that everybody's gender identity is sacred and important, I believe that transgender people are just as much of a people as I am, I believe that LGBTQIA people need to be included, and I will do everything I can to make sure I protect these communities and my communities, so.
Thank you so much. All right, thank you.
Thank you, John. Come on. One more, one more extra credit? No more comments by visitors? Okay.
Your spokesperson is taking care of things.
Thank you, this was, this was, this was great. We're almost at the end of our meeting, but we definitely, I just think that, I think our students are the best, and we're, we do support you, and thanks for coming. We don't always have, like, you know, especially if you're assigned to be here, but we celebrate it, everyone, you know, like, that's kind of what makes us kind of special in Summersworth, is that we are different, we are diverse, and we kind of have support through that, and you have a lot of people making decisions that support that as well. And, yeah, thanks for coming by. Bye, John. Bye, bye, Jamie. All right, cool. Comments by board members? Yes?
I just wanted to say, I'm so proud of our school community, those kids coming up to step up is amazing, like, kudos to them. I want to thank everyone for, you know, indulging me in my blender as I first stepped into chair role, you know, I think that we do worthy work, for sure. Yeah, and that is it, thanks.
That's great. Anyone else?
Board member Clark, thank you for being a capable second-in-command, and I would follow you anywhere.
Yeah, just to be clear, I think sometimes I come off as like sarcastic, because of the way I talk, but like, I literally meant you did a good job. I could not do it. You did a good job, yeah. And also, the C T C presentation was excellent, thank you.
Oh, thank you. Anyone else? I was just going to say, coming off a teacher appreciation week, and nurses, every, all these appreciation weeks, is that I don't really understand why it's just a week, it should be all the time, and I just want to extend to the board and to our community that every day, as a community, we need to step up as individuals and collectively to support our community in every way we know how. Take rest if you need to, but let's keep doing something, let's keep showing up. It is, 90% is showing up, I always say that to the school board, we show up, let's just show up. Show up, listen, support, be discerning, have critical thought, but teachers appreciation week looked really wonderful, and I'm glad that it happened, but it's also kind of a daily thing, so let's keep that up. Shout out to the track team, I'm just so proud of our students, they just, you hear Summersworth won, Summersworth, Summersworth. Great sportsmanship, and four-by-four relay, that was like sub 350, it was incredible. I'm just really proud of our community, our kids. That's why I was late. It may happen again. All right, we have some non-public. All right, looking for a motion, may you want to look at, if you have the, the non-public in front of you to say it, because we have B, E, and C today, so I need a motion to go into non-public per 91A, 3, 2, B, C, and E, please.
Okay, I want to try it because, okay. Motion to go into non-public per 91A, uh-oh, 3, 2, B, E, and C.
Maggie Larson, Carrie Clark, Sarah Brian Hart, Crystal Deesan Kroy, Bridgette Jamison, Carly Prescott.